Good evening and welcome. I am Jean McKnight, Planning Board Chair. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This particular meeting will have public comment for two items which involve public hearings. So first, I'll take a roll call to confirm that all members of the Planning Board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martin Jacobs.
Present.
Ted Owens.
Present.
Paul Alpert.
Present.
Adam Block.
Present.
I'd also like to call the role of Planning Board staff. Our Planning Director, Lee Newman.
Present.
And our Assistant Planner, Alexandra Klee.
I'm here.
Yes, and technical support for this meeting is provided for the Planning Department by Clay Hutchinson. And he is here too. All right. Now, for other participants in the meeting, please be aware that others may be able to see you. Members of the public may attend this meeting and observe it. Anything you share or state will be a matter of public record. And all supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www needham may.gov, unless otherwise noted. And the ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. As proponents of our, our proponents of agenda items appear, I will introduce each of them at that time when we get to that agenda item. After the presenters conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. And now, in the case of two public hearings, you know, once the board members have spoken and any comments the planning staff has, I will then turn to attendees and give them an opportunity to ask their questions and comments. Now, as we, and I should also add that all votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. I now ask, as we have customarily been doing, for a motion to continue this meeting to Tuesday, December 1st at 7:15 PM with the same Zoom ID number if technical difficulties arise that prevent us from addressing all the items on the agenda for this meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Jacobs has moved.
Second.
And Mr. Block has moved for that conditional continuation of the meeting. So I'll take a roll call. All in favor, Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Alpert? You are muted, Mr. Alpert.
Sorry, I.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
And the Chair is I, so we have that in place for possible continuation. So far, we have not had to use that contingency. Another contingency that I think is helpful because it has happened that I, as Chair, have had technical difficulties and my voice has been unable to be heard. And in that case, I would like a motion to have Paul Alpert, the Vice Chair, act as Chair if I need to temporarily zoom off and then would zoom on again. May I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Jacobs and a second by Mr. Block called a roll.
The other way around.
Motion by Mr. Block, second by Mr. Jacobs, and now I'll call the roll. Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Alpert?
Hi.
And Mr. Block?
Hi.
And the Chair is I, so we have that in, in place as well. And so it is now 7:20 PM. And the first item on our agenda is an amendment to Major Project Site Plan Special Permit Number 99-2 for the property at 140 Kendrick Street owned by BP 140 Kendrick Street LLC. And, and the hearing regards allowing this property to be leased to multiple tenants. But the primary focus of the hearing will be certain proposed site improvements.
That we waive the reading of the public notice.
Mr. Jacobs has moved that we waive the reading of the public notice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Block a second that. And I'll take the roll on that. Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Alpert?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
And the Chair is I. And so at this time, I will introduce and please say present when I say your name, the team for the proponent. So Nick Scully is the Project Manager at VHB. Is Mr. President? James Heroe, Landscape Architect.
Present.
David Provost of SVP Development.
Present.
Rick DeAngelis, who is Senior Counsel.
Excuse me, I had it on mute. I apologize. I'm present.
Yes, and so that's the team for people. So if you would like to proceed with your presentation.
Great, thank you very much. My name's Dave Provost, Senior Vice President from Boston Properties. You met the other teammates. The subject property is 140 Kendrick, which is a three-building office park on the southeast quadrant of Kendrick Street, I-95 intersection across Kendrick Street from the Coca-Cola plant. Little background on the property, we developed this three-building project as a headquarters for PTC in the late 90s. They were there for just about 20 years. Last year, they relocated to Boston. And as you said, we, as a result, we're looking to reposition what was designed as a single tenant project to a multi-tenant project. And as a result, we have some modifications to primarily really the courtyard. And we did have a good meeting with the Design Review Board. We had a healthy discussion. I believe what came out of that with no actual firm requirements, but one really good suggestion that we, we actually quite, we liked quite a bit. And we've integrated that into our design. So with that, why don't I pass it over to Jim? And he can walk us through some of those changes and we'll go from there.
Right, so I'm gonna share my screen if, see if the slides, maybe I should have practiced when you gave him the opportunity, but let's, let me know if you find my screen right now. Let's see here. All right, assuming you can see my screen now?
Yeah.
All right, terrific. All right. As Dave mentioned, and as you pointed out, Jean, that this was formerly a one-tenanted site and it's being switched to a multi-tenanted site. So because it was one tenant in the past, the driveway came in. If you can see my cursor going around this island, there was a central drop-off for the main entrance, which was the pavilion right here. And so there was some accessible parking here in front of the pavilion, but the majority of the parking took place within the garage itself. The build, the complex is made up of three buildings, Buildings A, B, and C, plus the garage. And you can see it's actually on Kendrick Pond, which has a public accessible hiking path, which is heavily used by hikers and dog walkers and that sort of thing. So you can see what's, what exists here now, the limited work line that we're proposing to changes for, you can see it's somewhat dashed around these areas. And we're retaining all the trees between Buildings A and Building C. We're not touching any of the trees along the back of the building, which actually fall within the 100-foot buffer. But there are some significant changes at the main drop-off because, as I mentioned, there was basically one front door before, which was at the pavilion, and it's being changed to basically three front doors. There's two front doors for Building C, but visibly the really main front door, a door for Building A and a door for Building B, all which will have several tenants in it. And Dave Provost can explain, you know, where the status is in terms of who's leasing the building for now because there's already a tenant for Building B.
I may just mention that, and just to clarify, it's not Kendrick Pond, it's Cutler Pond. So just for references for those in Needham. And Building B, we have signed a lease with IDG, which is currently located, they're currently located in Framingham and Natick, and they're moving their international headquarters to Natick. They were scheduled for January. We're hoping that they'll, they'll move in in the summer, in July, and we're super excited, and they're excited about moving to Needham. And they'll be occupying all of Building B.
So some of the changes in order to get IDG some parking at their front door, they would like some reconfiguration of this, of this area and through here. There's a little bit of reconfiguration because of that, that we're relocating some of the accessible parking over to the other side. And another change, change is that currently the existing campus had basically one service entry into the building here, which, which functioned for the, as a service for the entire complex. And you'll see we made a minor change back here by adding a path to a backup kitchen function within Building A. I can switch back and forth if you need me to, but let's, let's go to the... Basically, this is the modified plan. You see, there isn't any great change. The, the middle of the site does not change at all. The entrances to Building A and C does not really change much, a little bit of reconfiguration of the paths, just to make a clearer path to the front door. You can see the existing curb in red, so there's no changes within this zone at all. Where it really begins to change is around this island and around the entire courtyard area. So you can see the existing curb right along through here. So, so this is still all, it's pavement in the, currently it'll be pavement in the future. But the difference is that we've had to trim back the island on both ends to give IDG their parking at their front door, which is right here. And as a result of that, relocate the accessible parking to the opposite side closer to Building A. There are some removable, removing some landscape materials, a few tree, three trees here, one tree here, and the stone wall, which actually goes through the site right now. In the back of the site, behind the pavilion, actually, I should mention that the pavilion, where it was formerly the front door, becomes essentially the community room for the whole campus. There's going to be a kitchen and servery on the first floor and an exercise room on the second floor, along with some conference rooms, that'll be shared conference rooms for, for the entire complex. The back area, let me go back up for a moment. There's a terrace that exists back here now with a really quite nice stone wall with a little bit of pavement that's non-permeable, some planting beds and through here. But because of the multiple tenants and we're anticipating a higher use of this terrace, it's being expanded right to the back of the stone wall. It's 100% permeable now, so it actually has a better and higher filtration rate than it did in the past. There's a, two doors being added from the pavilion, which again is the community center now for the whole complex. The kitchen will be inside here, the back of the kitchen and through here. And this is what I meant by a service directly from the existing loading dock to the back of kitchen, just to bring food services in and trash out on that edge. Because of the four trees are moving in front of the complex, we're actually adding, as you can see, one, two, three, four, five trees and six, if you count this ornamental in the back of the site, just to make up for things. Also, just to sort of bring the scale down a little bit nicer to the terrace itself. The terrace, as I mentioned, is permeable and, and it's spent to have some those shoulder times of use into the warmer, not these months, but maybe. I mean, we're taking advantage of all these cooler nights with heat lamps, things like that. But, but the idea is that, that it's going to be used for, for meetings and that sort of thing. To allow access onto the terraces, a stone dust path being added at this end. There's an existing stone path, stone dust path right through here. We're shifting it over to make it ADA accessible, which raising the grade just a little bit through here, to remove sort of two and a half, three steps. And because of a life safety, we have to add several light fixtures along the pathway itself so people have a second means of egress and an illuminated way to get to the point of refuge back over here. And you'll see that in the improvements and through here. So we have our Building B parking, our accessible parking. The island with the new stone wall, there used to be a curving stone wall with the pathway, which was effectively non-accessible coming through the island before anyway because you had to jump up and down curbs. So it's, the drop-off area will be here, be a communal drop-off area. A central focus on the front door at the IDG building. Not really very many changes in through here, other than changing the pavement up a little bit. The terrace itself, a little bit of removal of a former putting green in through here, artificial turf putting green, putting real planting in through there, the pathway and the lighting along the path in through here, just to get to that second point of, that point of refuge. There's a few light poles, a couple light poles that have to be relocated, but we're adding a few more light poles just to maintain that one-foot candle requirement from all the points of egress out along the pathway away from the buildings. And again, that's why we're doing it back here as well. So we have some very low-level light to maintain the one-foot candle on the pathway from all the egresses in the building out to the pathway and then out to the loading dock area. I'll go through the images very, very quickly, but that's essentially it. This is the existing condition. You can see the non-accessible pathway right now, jumping up and down curbs to get you to the existing front door. It's quite nice, but you have to carve this back a little bit. There's the, the back of the building. Currently, the loges around Building B are sort of rough-scale pavers. We're replacing that with concrete and a smoother paver at the front door. The back terrace, the non-permeable pavement that's back here now with a little bit of planting. We're extending that all the way to the existing stone wall, not changing the wall at all. The inaccessible pathway, and these are the sort of two and a half, three steps risk raising the grade up a little bit and sloping it down to the DCR pathway. The stone dust path that exists now would basically be memory in that in the future. Just some precedence in terms of matching stone walls that are on the site. Existing lighting, we're matching on the site. Basically, it's to create that sort of communal corporate setting for the amenity space. And it will be completely wired, so we'll have, you know, stations that will, people can plug into, have their meetings outdoors. We are proposing a fire table, so if people have meetings in the evening or if there's special events, retirement party, that sort of thing, that can occur on that back terrace behind the pavilion. And Nick, I don't know if you want to say a few words about the, the engineering of the site, but I can, I can switch the pages if you'd like as we move on.
Yeah, no, I think you can stay on, on this page. I think the biggest piece that I'd just like to mention is we've been through the Notice and Tent process with the Conservation Commission. We're improving the stormwater, improving water quality. And we did receive our, our Order of Conditions out here a few weeks ago. So, so it is improved water quality, improved drainage. And I believe the town engineer only had one, one minor comment, which we addressed, which was to provide public outreach for, for the MS4, which we, we will do. And I sent that response back a few days ago. Other than that, happy to answer any questions on this, but, but I think that's the, the sort of high-level view of the stormwater approach.
So that's essentially our presentation. If you have some questions, I'd be happy to go back and answer the question specifically about the plan.
Jean, I think you're muted.
Jean, you're muted.
Great, thank you. Yes, so now Planning Board members who have questions or comments. I can't see the full screen because it's, I mean, it's helpful to have the material on the screen, but I may not see your hand. Maybe I'll, maybe I'll call on people. So the first person I see is Martin Jacobs. Mr. Jacobs, do you have any question or comment?
I really just have one. I really like the presentation. I really like what you're doing. The only concern is that I've seen was expressed by the police chief. And what he said is, as a standalone project, the police have no issues. My only concern would be the impact to Kendrick Street with the addition of this property and the children's project. I know they address, they address traffic issues separately, but I'm unsure of what the combined impact would be to this very busy location. I'm just looking for comment.
Yeah, I mean, I can take a pass through that and Dave, maybe you wanted to just jump in.
So this is Nick Scully.
Scully with, with VHB Civil Engineer. We're not increasing any square footage from what was previously developed. There was a tenant here in the past that recently moved out. So there shouldn't be any increase in, in traffic from this site from what it has been acting as over the past, since its first inception in the late 90s. It was an office user in the past. It will be an office user now. And there's no increase in, in program.
Or parking, right?
Or parking. It's the same, same parking. We're actually, it's the same exact number as, as the old approval.
But that's right. We're not expanding the building. As a matter of fact, PTC, if you had ever visited them, was more compressed. There was a lot of people kind of in benches, if you will. We don't know who the future tenants will be in A and C, but there's definitely trend towards the dense packing of employees. I think that's an impact from, from COVID-19. But Building B, it's a headquarters. There's a amount of offices. And my sense is when we get through this, that the overall occupancy will, will most likely be less than what was there as PTC's headquarters. Thank you.
Right, and that was Mr. Provost speaking, David Provost. So Mr. Alpert, Paul Alpert, do you have questions or comments?
No, I have no questions or comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Ted Owens?
I have no questions or comments. Thank you.
And Adam Block?
Madam Chair, I do have just one quick question. I think the presentation's very effective. I think I, I understood that there are four parking spots, disabled parking spots near Building A. Is there a requirement to have two, to split them up and have two at Building B? Instead of four by Building A?
Nick, may I answer that question? I don't believe there is so, but Nick, Nick, you probably have a better grasp of that.
So they're actually still within the, there's a minimum distance from the front door to the accessible spaces. We're grouping all those just because of the, the way the sidewalks lay out and the curb ramps there. So that's why those are shown there. I guess the other thing I will mention is we're restriping a few spaces in the garage as accessible as well. There is a connection from the garage to both Buildings B and C. So we're actually adding accessible spaces to meet the new ADA requirements. The old, when this was originally permitted, the requirements were slightly less. So we're, we are bumping up, we're restriping standard spaces as accessible spaces to be in conformance with, with the new accessible standards. And those are in the garage, which are actually connected to Buildings B and C. Be a sort of interior space. So if you, I guess in theory, if you wanted to go to B or C, you could walk inside and not have to brave the elements.
Right, does that, does that answer your question, Adam Block?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, I have a couple of questions myself. I actually went out and, and just drove around the property today and then walked along the path in the back. I always like to see a site. And I noticed one thing. Where your new path from the terrace would come down to the west, the path itself, right about that point, is deteriorated somewhat, muddy. And, and I notice, of course, that because people don't want to get their feet wet, they swerve off and walk on your property or what appears to be your property to avoid the muddy plagues. Is there any way that you could work with, I believe this is a state, state-owned land, to just put some more, whatever minor fill might be needed along the path and to upgrade the path somewhat with the new stone dust? Have you given any thought to that?
Well, actually, Jean, we actually are taking the path out completely, which, which currently is... Can you see my cursor on the screen moving along through here?
Yeah, so I'm speaking of the, the path that, that people take to walk around the pond.
Ah, ah, okay. Well, maybe, Dave, do you want to address that? So she's actually talking about the actual path that circular ambulates around Cutler Pond.
Yeah, and listen, it's a one, that we've spent a lot of time out there and it's amazing to see all the people walk through and gets a lot, and there's a lot of vibrancy to it. We'd be happy to reach out to the state to see if, certainly in the section in front of this, if we could improve it. We'd love to do it because it's a wonderful path. It gets a lot of views from multi-generational, a lot of dog walkers and things like that. And one of the reasons that drew IDG to this property was the bucolic nature of it and the connectivity to that path. Having said that, obviously, we don't control the path. We could make the request, which we will be happy to do that. But again, we've been neighbors for 20 years and I've been out there and I didn't notice that. But I'll take a look and we'll reach out to the appropriate people at the state to see if that's something that they would allow us to do. I think that's a great idea.
Well, thank you. I don't think it's something that requires a lot of expensive work, but I think it would be in your interest to, to, to make it a little better than it is just in that, just in the location of, but in your own property. And another question. Now, you're taking... Now, you're taking the trees that I saw in the existing conditions plan, that there were three trees in the circle and in the, in the area, you know, that you drive into. And those three trees are being removed. I know that that area is being made smaller and that's to help with your circulation. But doesn't it, doesn't it seem as though it would be kind of a nice thing to have one or two trees in that circle?
Well, it's a little tricky because, going back to the proposed plan, you can, you can actually see ghosted on the plan where those trees exist. Part of IDG's branding identity requirements is that they actually want signage on the second story of the building up through, maybe it's the third story of the building. So their entrance being stuffed in the corner over here, it's not exactly visible and to give themselves some presence and as you come into the site, they want to be able to have their identity be on the building itself. And there's going to be a second sort of pylon, lower ground level sign by their front door. So as you come in, there's going to be a visual clue in terms of like who, where IDG is, and they'll see where they are. And as people see the building, get closer, they'll find the other pylon. And again, sort of intuitively find the front door that way at that point. So there has been talk about trees in the island, but it seems that as the trees grow, it would be difficult to make it a multi-tenanted campus and have it be visually accessible to everyone. You know, we're trying to have it be as clear as possible.
Okay, I can appreciate that. And I know you said that you're replacing one for one, the trees, and you're putting them in, on the southerly side of the property where, in a sense, they will benefit the public walking by. So, okay.
So we're actually replacing them one and a half to one. So actually giving you a few, a few extra.
Excellent. Now, on the eastern side of the property, there's the far, the very far eastern part on your, on your, on what's on the screen, there's a parking area.
Yes.
I saw that a lot of people were parked there today, who probably were there to go for a walk. But is that, I assume that parking area is actually part of your property, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and then farther to the east, there's additional parking. That lot, is that lot public parking for people walking?
It's also part of the lot. I believe a couple of the spaces have easements on them to allow for people to park and access that trailhead there. But it is actually part of this 140 Kendrick Street lot.
Okay, or you mean even the first parking area that I mentioned? There is an easement for some public parking.
There isn't even for some public parking, yes. And there's, there's a couple of accessible spaces over there as well to, to allow ADA access on that trailhead.
Oh, that's good to know. And that easement holder, I suppose, is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I believe it is DCR, yes.
Okay. All right.
As counsel, I can confirm that. I drafted the easement agreement and it is held by DCR.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Attorney Provost. So just one more, well, I guess two more questions. On the new terrace, did I hear somebody say that the new terrace will be handicapped accessible?
Yes, so completely handicap accessible. There's actually several means of egress. One here, which actually exists, and a second one coming straight out of the cafe onto the terrace at the other end. This was a new egress from an upstairs. There's a new stair being added within the building. So this is handicap accessible, both just below the P on Pavilion and going out to the existing. This is an existing door right now. And we raised the grade in through here because currently it's not ADA accessible. If you're on the terrace and you do want to go for a roll or so along the pathway. So we're raising the grade slightly. It's not even three full steps. It's sort of like three, four and a half inch high steps. So we don't need to raise the grade too much. We're leaving the walls as they are, raising the grade in through here. And that's one of the reasons why we're changing the configuration of the pathway to create a, not a ramp, but a sloping pathway down to the DCR path.
Oh, good, that's what I thought I, because I observed that the terrace has three steps to get up to it now.
Yeah, and we're actually adding a second on the west end. And it's also an accessible pathway, so people can go out either way.
Oh, I see. All right, excellent. Then, oh yes, you displayed photos of a pool table, I think, a fire pit. Those are not precisely what you're proposing. Those are photos of other locations, correct?
Yes, it's not precisely. We have, this is a fire table we designed at the Hub 50 House, at the Hub on Causeway. We're designing something similar to this, except it's going to have a, an accessibility feature like this. So people can actually go up, put their laptop down on the table and work on it if they feel like it. But maybe in the evening, it's actually cut into it like this, rather than having it be raised. So you might want to say what we've designed for the site currently, which is in the set that you have, that has been submitted, is a sort of a hybrid of these two put together. In regards to the pool table, that's, you know, wishlist. You know, they may have been output pool tables or cornhole or Django, whatever the obligatory game of the month happens to be, but, but these type of things you might find out there.
Yes, I figured that was the case. So those are my questions and I'm satisfied with the answers. I want to make sure that our planning staff has an opportunity to ask questions and make comments. Lee Newman?
No, I'm all set, thank you, no questions.
All right, and some Alex, anything that has occurred to you that we have forgotten to ask?
No, nothing else, thank you.
Okay, then at this point, I want to let any members of the public, well, oh, excuse me, I forgot one thing. Before I turn to the members of the public, I want to mention the comments that have come from town staff. Let's see. Get to that part of the, yeah. So we have an email from our Fire Chief, Dennis Condon, saying the Fire Department is okay with this project. I have also an email from Tara Gurge, who is Staff of the Town's Board of Health, the Health Department. And she mentions, she mentions the, the various rules of the Board of Health that will need to be complied with in order to have food service and particularly to offer food service to more than one occupant of the, of the site. So I imagine our decision will reference the need to satisfy the Board of Health in that regard. And at any point, if anybody on the development team wishes to comment, please feel free. But otherwise, I assume you're satisfied, you will comply with these comments. Yeah. A sufficient area must be located in the parking lot to accommodate a trash, food, waste, and separate recycling dumpster and an exterior waste oil, waste oil grease barrel. Noting the proposed outdoor grill, if it's approved, it will need to be inspected by the Fire Department. And, and noting that if COVID-19 restrictions are still in place at the time that this is built and open to be used, the terrace, that is, that the chairs and so forth will need to be arranged to comply with those requirements. Then the Department of Public Works has provided a letter, and that is from Tom, Thomas Ryder, Assistant Town Engineer. And a comment that he has reviewed all of the materials. And I think as one of the presenters noted, that as part of the NIPD's requirement, the applicant will need to have public outreach and education and public participation and involve control measures. And I note that the, there was a response letter by VHB, Vanessa Hanger-Bresslin. They, Mr. Scully, who's here tonight, saying that the applicant will create and distribute an informational flyer, making sure there's enough flyers for every employee of the tenants and of the building and upon occupancy with information on the stormwater best management practices. So everybody is aware of what needs to be done. And the last comment, this is from the Police Chief, John Schlittler. And as, as mentioned earlier, he said, as a standalone project, the police have no issues. But his concern, he has this concern about the, the impact to Kendrick Street with the addition of this property and the children's project. Of course, the answer was although this building, this property has been largely vacant for a year or more. And so therefore has temporarily not been generating traffic. The square footage of the property and so forth has not changed and the use as office use has not changed. So it would not be expected to have any increased traffic as compared with the prior use. So now I want to let any members of the public who are attendees here, there is a chat feature and there is an opportunity to raise your hand. And, and Alex Clea is helping me to see if there is anyone who has raised a hand and would like to ask a question or make a comment. Do you see anyone, Alex?
Nobody yet. I'm just going to give it another 10 seconds to be sure. But I don't, I don't see anybody raising their hand.
All right, well then, it seems as though we've had our presentation, we've asked our questions, gotten our questions answered. And so perhaps it's time for a motion to close the hearing.
Madam Chair, I move to close the hearing.
Mr. Alpert has moved to close the hearing.
I second the motion.
Right, Mr. Jacobs is second to the motion. And so we'll seek a roll call vote. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
Mr. Owens.
Hi.
And Mr. Block.
Hi.
And the chair is I, so this, the hearing is closed. So then the next step in the process would be to make a decision on the granting of the relief that sought.
Madam Chairman, I can prepare a draft decision for the board to vote and consider it during next meeting on December the 1st.
That would be helpful to have, so we could put off our decision to the time when we actually have the written decision in front of us.
You would vote it on December the 1st. You could just, if there are issues that are unique to this property that you want included in the draft decision, if you can, if the board could let me know, I'll make sure that they're addressed. But the draft can be prepared for the meeting on December the 1st.
Well, why don't we make sure that as far as any special conditions, I already mentioned that we'd want to have a condition referencing the Board of Health's concerns. I don't recall any other board that had a special concerns. I know the Design Review Board was mentioned. We haven't, I haven't seen any communication for the Design Review Board. Perhaps if one of the presenters would address whether the Design Review Board actually wished to see some change that might be incorporated in our decision.
They did not. Need a suggestion about the path in the central island that Jim talked about. And we actually made that change. We thought it was actually, it was not a requirement, but we appreciated the opportunity to make the change.
And just so you're, so it's clear, Gene, there was formerly another crosswalk here and came down behind the island. And they felt that wasn't necessary and so did we. So we took it out and there's a little bit more planting there.
Okay, and I recall you saying that the Design Review Board was complimentary on the plantings and the landscaping in general. I'm looking over my own notes from our hearing. I guess the, we could word the promise to approach the state and see about, I don't know how to put it. I'm not asking for a major improvement to the public pedestrian path, but just to put it in good condition. But it would be something, as we often do with the state, that the, that the applicant will contact the state and seek approval to make this improvement. And if the approval is granted, then we'll go ahead and do it. Something along those lines, Lee.
Okay.
Yeah, and I see nodding from Attorney Provost. So then they already have the order of conditions. So I can't, I can't think of any other special conditions. Are there any special conditions that any other member wishes to make sure in the decision? No, all set. All right then. Thank you very much. And then it's time to move from this agenda item to our, to our next hearing.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So back to my agenda. Let me give the team of that, for that presentation, time to be present on the screen. And then I'll introduce each member. So, so they, this agenda item is, which is, which was scheduled for a 7:40 PM hearing and it's now just a little after 8:00 PM, is an amendment to Major Project Site Plan Special Permit, number 2012-07. The applicant is the Children's Hospital Corporation. The property is a large, a large property located at 66 B Street, 361st Avenue, 410 First Avenue, and 37 A Street. And the request is to build out development for Children's Hospital. And I'll comment that a special permit, the special permit that was referred to at 2012, and I think there may have been amendments of that special permit, did allow for a certain number of buildings on this site and parking garages and parking lots. The building that Children's Hospital is proposing is a new use, an outpatient hospital, which was not in allowed use at the time of the original special permit. And this new use of the Children's Hospital itself requires a special permit. And, and the changes to the site require an amendment to the original special permit. And both, in both cases, that involves a site, a site plan review. And both, in both cases, that involves a site, a site plan review. So, and if Attorney Smart feels that I should add something to that, please comment after, after I've got the team introduced. So, let me refer to my list here.
Madam Chairman, while you're getting ready, I would move that we waive the reading of the public notice.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to waive the reading of the public notice. And Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Albert.
Hi.
Mr. Owens.
Hi.
And the chair is I. So we, we have waived the reading of the public notice. So I will introduce this Timothy Sullivan, an attorney for the applicant of Gulston and Stores. Say you're, say that you're present.
Present.
All right. And also Attorney Smart is here. Now Attorney Smart, are you, you're appearing for this project as well as one that's later on the agenda? Is that correct? He's muted and well, maybe Mr. Sullivan, Attorney Sullivan, am I correct that Attorney Smart is also a part of your team?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I, I know he's here for something else after.
Yes. And I, I do see that he's got his box here. He just happens not to be, he happens to be muted at the moment. All right. So then we have Senior Vice President for Real Estate, Lisa Hogarty.
Present, Madam Chair.
Yes. Senior Project Manager Gerald Topping.
Present, Madam Chair.
From the engineering firm BHB, Sean Manning.
Present, good evening.
Okay. And then Beta Engineering was also engaged as the towns kind of to look over the work done by VHB as is customary for large projects like this. And so for Beta Engineering, do we have Jeff Maxtutis?
Present, Madam Chair.
All right. And, and I see, and Jacqueline Centracchio.
Yes, Present, Madam Chair.
All right. So I want to mention again, for the sake of the public, that the, the applicants will make their presentation. The members of the planning board will have an opportunity to ask questions, make comments. The, then I'll see what comments have come in from town staff. And then we will turn to the public to see if anybody who is tuned into this hearing would like to ask a question or comment. So at this point, I turn to the applicant's team to make their presentation.
Good evening, Planning Board members. Thank you for having us back again. We've been engaged with you now, I think, for over a year. And as you, as I think you know, we received zoning approval in June to allow for the use of a pediatric ambulatory facility. And, and so tonight, Tim Sullivan, who is our counsel on the project, is going to take you through our presentation.
Thank you, Lisa. Madam Chair, I'm just gonna share my screen here. Okay. Is that, is that visible to everybody? Great. Okay. So thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Tim Sullivan of Gulston and Stores here on behalf of the applicant. So, you know, we're excited to be back. We spent a lot of time on the zoning and now fortunately we're here to talk about the project. So there's a few things we'd like to cover. By way of introduction, I think in the intro, the chair covered some of it, but we'll just give a little refresher of where we've been over the past year or so. Talk a bit about the project that's being proposed and of course, the relief we're asking for. And we'll touch upon the required findings and be available for questions. I should say at the outset, you know, we, we've submitted a comprehensive package of materials, including our zoning analysis, which has the relief we're asking for, as well as how we satisfy the required findings, but also a traffic report, a letter from Tetra Tech and other materials, including site plans and elevations and the like, many of which we'll touch upon tonight. So just the background here. So we're in the New England Business Center and that's how we started the conversation with the town. Children's had an opportunity here. Outlined in yellow is the New England Business Center and orienting everyone, Route 128 is on the left and Highland Avenue is on the top of the screen. Kendrick on the bottom and the Charles River and the, the town line with the City of Newton on the right. The, the Center 128 project is outlined in the, in the aqua here in the aerial, and that's the, the site that we're talking about. When we, when we came to talk to the town back in August of 2019, the threshold issue was the pediatric ambulatory use that we wanted to do wasn't allowed. So we spent a lot of time working on the zoning, working on adding an allowed use by special permit to the district that allowed for a pediatric medical facility, a facility that treats on a day basis, no overnight beds, no ERs. And we worked on the words with this board as well as the parking, what the required parking was. We submitted information from VHB on the ratio, on the trip generation analysis of, of the change of use. And of course, that was peer reviewed by Beta. And a lot of that work is, is reflected in, in the information that we submitted here. And, and you know, again, we started this process back in, in August of 19 and, and worked right through to a town meeting in, in June of 20. And we were fortunate. We were able to meet outside despite COVID. And there was a unanimous approval of that amendment to allow the use by special permit, as well as to approve some agreements that we worked on with the town during that period too. So this project will will be paying real estate taxes that the town would have received had an office building gone forward here, as well as payments towards youth services in lieu of personal property taxes. Coming off the town meeting, we've spent some time with the development review team. That was in August. And then with the Design Review Board in September, both of which signed off on, on what we've submitted. And we did that while we waiting for the AG to, to approve the zoning. So we, we've been working with the town for quite a some time and we feel like our application is reflective of that. So the proposed project. So a minute ago, I, I had the aerial view on the screen. This is a zoomed in version of more than just our site, but I think it's helpful to provide some context. So in this, in this screen, what you see on the, on the left-hand side is 128 again. But we're, we're zoomed in here on what's, what's referred to as Founder's Park. And it's really made up of three segments. We're only here to talk about one of those segments, Center 128 West, which is on the left-hand side of the screen in the blue. But just because these terms are thrown around, we thought it would be helpful to orient. So Center 128 West, our project is located within that, that's on the left. The middle is Center 128 East, which is the Shark Ninja location. And then on the right is the Second Avenue residences. And that's kind of what, when the term Founder's Park is thrown around, it's made up of these three, three components. But again, we're talking here about Center 128 West, and that's what's reflected in this slide. And this is oriented such that a slight bit of, of east is shown here as well. But the project that we're in is in, is in west in this area here. So as was mentioned in the open, Center 128 West has an approved special permit. It's been amended a number of times over the years. We are proposing, or Children's is acquiring the three blue buildings and the remaining rights to develop the garages. The overall prod, the overall project that's approved here is four office buildings, building identified here as building one, two, three, and four, a hotel and two parking structures. The office building, building three, which is the TripAdvisor building, has been constructed. The hotel has been constructed. And a portion of Garage B, which is in gray, has been constructed. So Children's is acquiring the rights to develop the rest of it, which is the three office buildings and the remaining parking. But in lieu of an office at building one, there'll be a pediatric medical facility use. And that's the use that was allowed by the town meeting vote. So we're proposing, as we'll show in plan view in a minute, to move some of the square footage that was approved for the A Street building over to 381st Avenue. So there'll be a 224,000 square foot pediatric medical facility in building one, which is achieved by a corresponding reduction in the approved office at A Street. And we'll see in a minute, there's really not much change to this building. A fair amount of that square footage is actually in the basement and achieved by kind of squaring off this side, the TripAdvisor side of this building. So we don't increase height, we don't reduce setbacks. We don't increase the overall square footage at the center. It's just achieved by moving square footage over from A Street. The A Street building is reduced by a floor and a portion of the footprint is also reduced. We have no immediate plans to move forward with A Street or B Street. They'll remain office under the special permit for future development. And as part of this phase, we'll build out the rest of Garage B, as it was initially approved, 530 spaces. And there'll be an interim parking lot in the approved development envelope of A Street. And together that will meet the required zoning parking for the site that was approved as part of the ratio. So in summary, the project that's being proposed is a 224,000 square foot pediatric medical facility at 381st, which is achieved by moving some of the square footage from the A Street building, which is building four. Building two and four will be constructed at a later date where we remain office in the special permit. The parking ratio that was approved was one space per 290 square feet, and that's 773 spaces based on this. We're building out the rest of Garage B. There'll be an interim lot and there's some surplus, as we'll show in a minute, in the existing Garage B. And with all of that, we'll satisfy all of the zoning requirements on site, which includes an allocation for Center 128 East. It's part of the special permit. It's actually part of a recorded document. We'll be able to satisfy that as well. So this, this is a site overlay plan. It, it doesn't present terribly well, frankly, on Zoom, but it's in your package. And I can just talk a little bit about what it shows. This is a plan that sort of has been helpful to show what we're doing, which is, which is really minimal when it comes to, to this. So we're reducing building four, which is shown if, if folks can see my cursor, taking a floor off that and reducing a portion of the building footprint. That square footage is coming over here to 381st, which is identified here. You can see the red outline shows that there's a slight change in the building footprint, moves a little bit away from the abutting property line and gets squared off with TripAdvisor. And as I mentioned, a lot of that square footage is actually, actually in the basement. So there's no increased height or reduced setback. Some of the purple here is just really to show the pathways and the like that, that are accommodating, you know, circulation to the new building footprint. And then the only other change shown here is there's a slight bump out of Garage A. And the reason for that is because we needed an elevator lobby, although Garage A is not moving forward at the moment. We wanted to just fix up the plan now. Interestingly, this garage wasn't designed to have an elevator to the roof, which of course, for children's is an important thing. So we've, we've included a bump out here, which results in a slightly longer run of that facade. So we wanted to include it as part of the application. This is a little bit cleaner, presents a little bit better on Zoom. This is the interim condition plan or the current proposal. So we've included this as well, and this shows a little bit more clearly cleanly what the building footprint will be for 381st, as well as the interim parking lot and the addition, or the completion really of Garage B. So the materials we submitted are, as I mentioned, extensive and include charts and, and the like. And we thought a couple of them might be helpful here just to call out. This is a chart that shows how the project complies with the dimensional requirements. On the, it has the requirement, it had, has what's approved under the existing special permit and our current proposal. And what you can see is you go down for lot frontage and FAR and setbacks. Those are all the same as, as what's there today. The lock coverage is slightly higher, but well below the, the maximum of the 65%. The building height, the open space, they all stay the same as well as street trees. There's a slight increase to the uninterrupted facade in Garage A, as I mentioned, to 337 feet. But again, there was a, there was another facade on this site approved for 352, and it's, it's below that. These charts just show the, the parking requirements that I mentioned earlier. So it shows the required by zoning, which you can see is the hotel, the TripAdvisor Office Building, the pediatric medical facility, and then the 857 spaces for Center 128 East, that totals 2,732. There's an existing parking supply out there now of 2,223. And after we finish the parking that we're going to build, there'll be 2,858, which is a surplus over the 2,732 required by zoning. So the parking that's constructed will satisfy the aggregate of requirements for the uses on site. And then this is the same chart, but for the full build condition. And the total zoning requirement, again, including the Center 128 East, 857 spaces is 3,491. And the proposed parking ultimately, once all of it's constructed, will be 3,642. Again, well excess, well in excess of the zoning. So that's a little bit about what the project is, how it complies with the existing approvals, the minimal changes that are, are being proposed. Also just want to touch a little bit on the transportation elements and then on design before moving to the required findings. So with respect to transportation, as I mentioned, we, we had done a trip generation analysis that was peer reviewed with the parking back when we did the zoning process. And that, you know, that trip generation, of course, and that work that was done is, is all incorporated into that report. But we submitted a more robust analysis as part of this special permit application. And some of the highlights here, access between Center 128, more specifically 128 West, that stays the same. We're not changing anything about that, that access or circulation. The total parking being proposed and the square footage we're proposing is not any greater than what was initially approved. And, you know, in, in summary, that analysis shows that there's a really a de minimis impact to the area. And again, we're, we're moving forward with 381st Ave now. The office buildings are approved and, and we're maintaining those rights, but that's not part of the, the project where we're, that will be moving forward at this time, just the 381st Ave. And then finally, you know, Beta has again been engaged. We did receive their analysis. We're looking at it. We, there are some questions that we need to answer. We had a great working relationship with them during the zoning process and we expect to, to provide those in, in short order so that they can finish their, their review. So again, as I mentioned, we did, we did meet with the Design Review Board. And I just want to touch on the facade elevations here. So these are largely the same as what's in your package. I just want to note two changes that we did incorporate based on the feedback from the Design Review Board. So this is from the south, traveling north on 128. On the right-hand side is the TripAdvisor Building, which I think people are familiar with. And then the, the building we're proposing at 381st is, is here. The two changes from what you have, one is the mechanical screening. We had proposed something more along the lines of what's at the TripAdvisor Building, a bit darker. The Design Review Board looked at that and suggested that lighter to blend in with the building and the backdrop would be better. So we did, we thought it was a great suggestion. We incorporated that. And then they also gave us And then they also gave us some guidance that we should really have put some thought into signage. And so this is reflecting the signage that we anticipate submitting to them, we have not done so yet, we'll do so shortly. But it's one thing I would note, actually, I'd note a couple of things. Number one, it's consistent with TripAdvisor signage. Number two, you know, as I think we talked about a bit during the zoning process, there's a real wayfinding function to the signage for this facility. You know, people will be traveling here regionally, nationally, internationally. They may not come to Needham or come down 128. So knowing where this is and how to get there is an important function of this. And so we've put some thought into it and that's reflected here as well. So this is the facade from the south traveling north. This is from the north traveling south on the other side of 128, sort of now you're back towards Muzzy. This is the interior of the site. So on the left-hand side of this image, you have the TripAdvisor, the interior side, the other side being the 128 side. On the right-hand side of this image, you have the existing garage B. And so straight ahead of you is the building at 381st, again reflecting the signage on the building as well. And you can see as you're coming into this site, the wayfinding function that that will serve, not just from 128, but also once you're in the office park. And then this is if you were looking back towards 128 with your back towards the garage, this is the drop-off area. And people who know design way better than I do will tell you that the building is designed to sort of cantilever out over the drop-off area. So not only does it have an interesting aesthetic to it, but it also has a functional, it serves the function to cover the drop-off for people who are coming in to drop off patients and come in. So that's the design. Just one other thing about the project, you know, I think when we're comparing this to what is out there today in this amendment, I think it's important to note that there are significant economic and community benefits to this project, you know. We spent a lot of time working with the town on the pilot agreement, the payment in lieu of taxes, so that the town would be made whole, as if they had an office development here, they'll be paying real estate taxes, also be making payments in lieu of personal property taxes for youth services in Needham. And it will bring forward development on a site frankly that's been approved for a number of years and hasn't moved forward. With a world-class medical facility right on 128 here in Needham, you know, it'll be an innovation hub for children's, and children's employs over 250 Needham residents, you know, including physicians systemwide. So it's really a great benefit in that respect too. And as we all know, there's hotels, there's food services, those will really benefit at a time where they need to from this project. People will travel here, again, as I mentioned, nationally, internationally, regionally, and they'll be treated, and they may stay at the hotel before their treatment and after their treatment, and even for an extended period of time while they're doing physical therapy and the like, and it will really be a driver for those businesses down there. And of course, Children's has a strong track record in the community as a local partner and commitment to civic engagement and local, you know, youth-serving efforts. So that's the project. I won't spend a lot of time on the relief requested, but I would like to touch on it because there are just some details to touch on. So as we mentioned, there's really two things we're asking for. One is a special permit for the use of 381st Avenue as a pediatric medical facility, the use that was approved by town meeting. And the second is because we're changing that building slightly and we're changing the use, there are some, you know, some cleanups to the special permit itself. So I'll just go through these, these are detailed extensively in our application. But they are to replace the existing special permit plan set, you know, with the updated set, to move the square footage again from building four to building one. The section nine is the section that says you need to build in accordance with the plan set, so that needs to be updated. Section 3.11 talks about the uses that are allowed, so that will need to be cleaned up. Section 3.38, it's the design guidelines, but it has similar references to the uses and to the building type that will just have to be cleaned up in connection with this change and the facade changes. And then there's, this special permit was always contemplated to be built out over phases, over years. That expires in November of 2022, I think as, or 2022. And I think as we talked about a bit during the process, we need to finish this process with the town, then there's a determination of need process that has to happen. So we need to extend that out, not only to allow for 381st, but then to allow for, you know, those later phases. So we're asking for an extension of that timeframe as well. And then there's the length of the garage A facade from 300 to 337 to accommodate the elevator lobby. There are also two findings that were being requested. One is, as I mentioned, there's an interrelationship between Center 128 East and Center 128 West. And just because of that relationship, we just wanted to clarify that although we're amending this special permit, we're maintaining those 857 spaces. We have to, they're in the special permit, they're of record, but that we're not doing anything that would impact that application or that separate special permit. And then finally, the property owner would like us also to ask for the same condition that was in the TripAdvisor building. Should we not proceed with the closing by March 31st? Which is an unlikely event and it's, you know, they are asking for this as a contingency to cover themselves that the special permit would revert back to the approved special permit without the changes, except for the extension of time. And then finally, you know, I'm not going to run through these, these are all the required findings that I know the board is all too familiar with on special permits. We detailed them in our application. But again, given the nature of the project, given the economic benefits, and frankly, you know, all of these were true when the special permit was granted. And I think they're even further satisfied now with this project, given the economic benefits, the nature of the project and the community health benefit that comes with the change from 381st Ave from office to pediatric medical facility. So with that, I just, you know, in closing, again, we request that the board approve the special permits and the amendments that we're requesting, and we're available to answer any questions.
Right, thank you, Mr. Sullivan, Attorney Sullivan. And I just want to make one quick comment before I open it to others. My package had your letter dated October 13th, 2020, but it was missing two pages, pages eight and nine. And I don't know if that's because in the transmittal from you to the town and then putting it on the town's website, those pages got missed. But it would be good just to make sure that we have your entire letter, especially since I found your presentation with regard to the particular relief requested to be very useful. And I'm thinking perhaps that was spelled out on those pages, so.
We're happy to get that to you. I'm looking at the letter, page eight was the chart that I went through on dimensional compliance. And you're right, page nine, I believe is the other page, you said, that was the start of the relief requested. Yeah, so we'll make sure we get that to you, for sure.
Okay, so at this point, I'll turn to other members of the planning board who may have questions or comments. And then I'll turn to the comments that have come from our engineering advisor and from, and we'll go into those. So who would like to start? Mr. Jacobs is at the top of my screen.
Could I suggest, Madam Chairman, that, just a suggestion, if you want to proceed in that order, that's fine, but I think I would like to hear from Beta first, if that's all right.
Yes, that's actually a good suggestion. At this point, let's turn to, from Beta Engineering, we have both Jeff Maxtudus and Jacqueline Centracchio. And I know that there were several comments, oh, almost 20 comments on their letter. The proponents said that they intend to address, but they haven't addressed yet. But it would be good to get a general idea of what those comments were and what your concerns were.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, Jeff Maxtudus from Beta, I was just going to say that we did review VHB's study, and we do have a presentation to show you that Jacqueline Centracchio is going to lead us through.
Excellent.
We can take any questions based on that.
Thank you, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Also, I'm going to share my screen. Did that work?
It's up now, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we were tasked with the transportation peer review for the Boston Children's Hospital at Founder's Park. And again, my name is Jacqueline Centracchio from Beta Group, and I perform the peer review. For the peer review process, we conducted a site visit of the area, and we reviewed the traffic impact and access study dated October 2020. And we also looked at the plan set that was provided dated October 2020. We also had to reference the supplemental draft environmental impact report that was dated back in August of 2015 because much of the report referenced that document. And then we submitted our peer review comments on November 10th. Previously, as the applicant has said, we had reviewed the trip generation and parking generation and found it to be reasonable. It was a multi-month review process back and forth. And so we're not going to talk much about the trip generation or parking generation as part of this presentation and review. So this review focused mainly on the study area, volume data, the pedestrian and vehicular site circulation, analysis methodology, the results, and also the mitigation. The existing volume data was collected in October of 2019. Seven intersections were collected, well, peak hour data was collected at seven intersections from 7:00 to 9:00 AM and 4:00 to 6:00 PM. They also collected 16 ATR locations.
Please, please say what ATR is.
Oh, automatic traffic recorders, sorry. That is, those are those tubes, well, they have more modern technology where, you know, it's taken from, you know, it's mounted to a telephone pole, but most people know it as the tubes that run across the roadway that you drive over and it collects vehicle data, vehicle classification and speed data. While I'm talking about it, the speed data and vehicle classification was not included as part of the data collection for this. So solely volume data was collected at these 16 locations.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. The study area did include four intersections out of those seven intersections that data was collected at. So the four intersections were the Highland Ave intersections at First and Second Ave and the Kendrick Street intersections with Third and Fourth Avenue. The three of the intersection volumes were not shown on the volume diagrams, and those were the three intersections at the site driveways for the site. So we just, you know, wanted to ask why that those three intersections weren't included as part of A, the study area, and, you know, B, on the volume diagrams to give us a better indication of the anticipated traffic flow throughout the site. I just, the ATR locations, the raw data was provided in the appendix. However, it wasn't discussed at all otherwise in the report. So a summary table of those 16 ATR locations is something that I would have expected to see as a baseline for any, you know, post-development studies that are done in the future. Also, the COVID-19 traffic impacts were not addressed in the study. And that is something, you know, we think should have been included in some way, shape, or form in the study. The site parking was previously reviewed, however, a portion of those spaces that were considered as part of the total proposed parking spaces were spaces that were existing surplus spaces from the other property or the other buildings. So this is a comment we had made in our April 2020 review, and it was just, we wanted to make sure that the review of the parking supply is included in a future monitoring study post-development. As the applicant had shown, there was an interim and a full build plan provided in the plan set. And it was a little challenging to see which was considered the proposed pedestrian amenities for the project versus what exists today. I believe that the walkways were just kind of realigned a bit. You know, we were just wondering what else was being provided that might have been unclear on the plan. There is a, existing today, there are two raised crosswalks that connect the sites. One of the crosswalks that exists is between Garage B and 381st Street. So we had just mentioned that consideration should be given to raising that crosswalk also, since the other two, on the other two legs of the intersection were raised and there'll be additional pedestrian, you know, pedestrians accessing across that street. And also, the interim plans where the New Way and Founder's Way meet, there were three stop signs, it was a three-way stop sign at that intersecting area. And in the full build, there's one stop sign on the New Way approach, I believe it is. Yeah, the New Way approach, and we were just wondering why it went from the three-way stop sign intersection to just one on that one approach. So just a little clarification on that. The vehicle trips were distributed to the study area intersections, just the same as it was for the 2015 study that was done. And the 2010 census data was used for that, so it was older data than we have available today. So we just wanted them to confirm that the trip distributions from 2015 are still relevant in 2020. And also to clarify how the pediatric medical office distribution percentages were determined, considering that the pediatric medical, you know, office space was not part of the 2015 development. And we had just suggested that the Boston Children's Hospital patient data would be more accu, what is it, the word I'm trying is applicable for this, for determining the trip distribution. There were about 300 trips coming from the west, you know, from 128 from the west on both Kendrick Street and Highland Ave. So none of the intersections to the west of First at Highland and Third at Kendrick were included in the study area. So we just wanted clarification on why those, you know, no intersections to the west or ramps were included in the analysis. There were two future conditions that were analyzed. One was for the approved project, a previously approved permitted project at Founder's Park and the proposed Boston Children's project. And a 0.5% annual growth rate was used, which was consistent with the 2015 report. There was not, a no-build condition was missing from the report also, which is typical in a, you know, traffic impact study. And, you know, that was included in the SDEIR. So since they updated the, you know, permitted analysis, they could have updated the no-build analysis also. And if they could just explain to us why that was not included in the report, that would be helpful. They did include background developments for about five other developments in the area. They had used the ITE trip generation data to determine the number of trips generated by those developments. However, there are traffic studies out there for some of those developments that could have been used to better determine the number of trips for. that could have been used to better determine the number of trips for those projects, since, you know, a lot of times, you know, these studies don't just use the ITE trip generation anymore. There's a lot more thought that goes into determining those number of trips. Again, they, you know, they analyzed the four study area intersections for the existing and the two future conditions. And I'm just going to highlight, you know, what we had found at a few of the intersections. So the First Avenue and Highland Avenue intersection, for the approved future analysis during the morning peak hour, the First Avenue northbound left turn volume, there was a little bit of a discrepancy between the 2015 report, the 2015 report had 365 northbound left turns, and the traffic impact study had 113 northbound left turns. So we're just asking to describe any, you know, known reason for the significant difference in volume for that northbound left turn. The Second Avenue and Highland intersection is oversaturated during the evening peak, and some of the traffic signal is, you know, antiquated, as you can see in the photo, is, you know, the signal post is rusted. So consideration should just be given to maybe updating that, you know, some of the equipment there that wasn't updated as part of a prior project. The Fourth Avenue and Kendrick Street, which I'm sure we're all very familiar with, we had observed, you know, safety issues at that intersection due to the high-traveling speeds and the very few sufficient gaps available for vehicles exiting, either turning left or turning right onto Kendrick Street from Fourth. And there was also, you know, when we observed a pedestrian safety issue for pedestrians crossing Fourth Ave. And we had asked to provide a signal warrant analysis, and that's pretty typical for unsignalized intersections that are, you know, part of a study area. In terms of the transportation mitigation, a list of the mitigation, I guess, agreed upon for the Founder's Park development originally in 2015 was noted. It was listed in the report, and every every mitigation was listed as completed for that project. And the mitigation proposed for the Boston Children's Hospital impacts were, there were two of them. One was signal timing adjustments and maybe phasing changes at the intersection of Third and Kendrick. And to increase the storage capacity on Third Avenue approaching Kendrick Street, because that right-turn volume, you know, backs up going on to Kendrick Street. So typically, if, you know, mitigation is proposed with, you know, signal timing tweaks or phase changes, there's a mitigation analysis that's done with the program Synchron that was used to analyze the intersection. And, you know, we just asked to provide an analysis to verify that that mitigation measure that is suggested, you know, it would actually be beneficial, and timing or phase changes could be helpful for that intersection. And currently, there are two marked southbound lanes on Kendrick Street, well, not on Third Avenue approaching Kendrick Street. So really, the outer lane acts as a right-turn-only lane, and then you have the left-turn lane. So it's, the pavement markings extend back several hundred, at least 300 feet, but there's no markings. So what we think is, you know, to better delineate that right-turn-only lane, you know, markings and signage would be helpful with that. And it would just provide that extra safety measure. And according to the traffic study, a monitoring program is proposed for the development, but it wasn't outlined in the mitigation. So we just want a confirmation that the post-occupancy study will be conducted to take another look at the traffic impacts post-occupancy. And really, my additional comments have to do with safety. Safety wasn't really addressed in the report at all. So, you know, our suggestion was, you know, come up with some maybe Third Avenue and Kendrick improvements, you know, to mitigate the impacts there. One of them would be realigning, that's number 28, our comment 28, realigning the overhead signal heads, realigning them with travel lanes, because currently they're very offset from the center of the travel lane, which is how they should have been constructed. So it's really just moving one signal head down a few feet, moving the other signal head down a few feet. That should, that should fix that issue. And also, crash data wasn't collected. Typically, that's done at the intersection. Some sort of a safety analysis is done in a traffic study. So that was the other one that we wanted to mention. So that's a, that's a brief summary of our, the majority of our comments. There were some that were just very minor that we, I didn't mention in this report or in this presentation.
Well, thank you, Jaclyn, Ms. Centracchio, for this presentation. And it raises, of course, many issues regarding that need to be addressed by the proponents. It's clear, and I didn't expect that we would be closing the hearing on this project tonight. Of course, we'll be keeping the hearing, we'll be continuing the hearing so that we can have a response to your comments and have the comments addressed. And now, I I'd like to ask our Planning Director, Lee Newman, as far as process goes for this hearing, would it be good to have responses to this presentation by Beta? Or to postpone such responses? And I'm speaking this point of simply oral responses by the proponents to our next meeting, when there had been more time to address the issues.
I think, yeah, the proponent, I think, mentioned that Beta and VHB are talking, and they were hopeful that they would be able to address these issues at a continued hearing. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, that's correct. I think, you know, many of these things are pieces of information that can be resolved, most of these things really, can be resolved very quickly between VHB and Beta, and I think that would be the most efficient and to address any sort of outlying items at the next meeting.
So as far as the members of the Planning Board who might have questions or comments regarding traffic impact, I wonder if now is the time to ask them or make them, or they might be also put off until the continued hearing. Is there anything anyone feels it would be good to put out right now?
Just speaking for myself, I would like to see if VHB and Beta can narrow the issues or eliminate the issues and obviate the need for much discussion about this, but I don't see putting my two cents in until I see whether Beta thinks there's anything really to talk about.
Okay, Mr. Malpert, anything to say on the traffic issue at this time?
Not, no, not on the traffic issue.
Not on the traffic. And so I'll turn to Mr. Owens. Do you have any question or comment regarding the traffic issues that were presented?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. And Mr. Block?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. So I think, though, of course, we had the presentation on the design and in general of the building and the project. And perhaps there are other questions that should be asked at this time so that it would provide guidance of any issues that need to be addressed later. And also, of course, we have comments by our town staff that I'll get to also. Would you like me to do the town staff comments now, and then we can do our final comments and questions when we have, after I've presented those? Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have, because there may be issues that were raised that need to be addressed. I'm looking at the Design Review Board memo dated September 14, 2020. And the various questions, comments, it was said that these comments have already been addressed in the plans that were presented. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes. We had lightened the mechanicals in response to their comment, and we've included signage as we believe it will be proposed, and we'll be back to them. Those were the two items I had mentioned.
Yes.
There was, I think, raised in the Design Review Board letter on design approaches, but I think in the end, the Design Review Board approved the elevations as they were proposed.
Okay.
The letter is clear in terms of what their concerns were.
All right. I won't go through each of the paragraphs of the concern, because presumably they have been addressed as was presented. Our Fire Chief, Dennis Condon, says in an email dated October 22, "The fire department is okay with this project and will work with the developer to ensure all codes and regulations are met." Tara Gurge for the Health Department says, has certain typical issues that have to do with food service and compliance with Board of Health rules for food service. And the need for, especially if there is food service for a dumpster for food. And no public health nuisance issues, that is odors, noise, light mitigation, et cetera, to neighboring properties shall develop on-site during or after construction. Let me take this moment, since the Health Department has mentioned light mitigation, or light, excuse me, migration is what they, is what was mentioned in the letter. When the parking garage that exists on this site was originally built and fitted up with its lighting, there was a concern about, and I was the particular member of the Planning Board that raised this concern, that it was overly bright, exceptionally bright at night, and it, and the the owner, you know, developer cooperated and reduced the lighting to the extent that, of course, the parking garage is safe for the users, but it's just not as brilliant as it was, which was really quite distracting. So I just make that comment to, I know that you're going to be adding to the parking garage and perhaps eventually putting in another parking garage to take care of the lighting and have it not the level of the lighting not be excessive, which is a concern raised by the Health Department as well. Our Police Chief, John Schiller, says he has no concerns with the proposed plan. From the Public Works Department, our town engineer comments, and this is a pretty typical comment. They wish to have a plan for compliance with NIPD's requirements for public outreach and education, so that will need to be addressed. And a particular comment with regard to the sewer flow impacts to provide the design sewage flows differences from the plan that was previously approved to this plan. And so currently, the our engineering department did not find the presentation material sufficient to answer his concerns in that area. And I hope, you know, that also will be addressed by the time of the next hearing. And then they say, Mr. Ryder agrees with the findings from VHB and Beta, and there's no comments or objections to add. But of course, he's undoubtedly seeing the 28 or so comments from Beta and expects those to be addressed. So with that, as far as comments perhaps about the design or other aspects of the project that the Planning Board might have or questions. Are there any questions, Mr., from you, Mr. Jacobs?
Not now, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Block, any questions or comments right now? You're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I can't respond.
Okay, Mr. Owens?
Not at this time.
All right. And Mr. Albert?
I don't have any questions at this time. I would like to just make a couple of comments. One is that even though I know that there's no accounting for taste, I was very pleased with the renderings of what this facility will look like from the outside, the building and the signage. I found it to be most pleasing. And will, if, if, if the final product looks like these, these renderings, I think they will be a great addition to the town and the, the physical ambiance for, for, for that area. And the other comment that I want to make, having listened to Ms., and I hope I pronounce her name correctly, Centracchio's presentation, I want to thank our friends at Beta. I think they did a fabulous job and a very thorough job on our behalf, and I want to thank them for that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I'm glad, I'm glad you expressed that. Thanks. I also was impressed with the work that was done for us. I only had one question. A reference was made to an interim parking lot, I think. And I had taken a look at the plans and paid attention, but I couldn't quite understand what was referred to as an interim parking lot. Could somebody just direct me, and it doesn't have to be a lengthy presentation about it, but just so I understand what's meant?
Sure, I can. So when we build the project, we're going to build the, we're going to complete Garage B, which is 530 spaces. Then we would build a surface parking lot at 37A Street with 105 spaces. And, and together, that will satisfy the zoning required. And it's within the approved development envelope of that site. And it would be replaced when building, when a building's built there and Garage A is built. So.
So if I look at this part of the plan that's along A Street, I'll see that parking lot?
Yes, there's a plan called an interim condition site plan. That's the plan to look at.
Okay. And then when you speak, and I know, I know the report on parking had a couple of charts, and then it had a final stage, and that would be the parking that would be provided if and when the other two buildings are built. Is that correct?
The other two buildings and Garage A, yes.
And Garage A, yes.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
So since this is a public hearing, I do want to make sure that any members of the public who are watching or listening have an opportunity to ask questions or make comments. And the way that can be done for participants is to use the hand-raising feature. And Alex Clea will look and see if she sees anyone. And, and you'll, be quiet, would, we need a question to have your name and address before you speak, for the record.
So Jean, I do not see anybody, as we did last time. I would say we should give it, you know, 10 or 20 seconds. There are a lot of people in the attendee section, so I just want to make sure people can, you know, find, find that button if they need it. But so far, nobody is raising their hand.
Okay. Yes, certainly, we want to give people more time, and also in anticipation of a motion to continue the hearing. If any question occurs to a member of the public that they did not have an opportunity to ask now. Lee, let me ask you right now. Lee, let me ask you right now, what is the date to which we should continue this hearing and the time? You're muted, Lee.
Well, there are two options, I mean, there's an option of doing it at our next meeting, which would be on December the first, or doing it two weeks later, which I think is the 15th. It's really a question of how long children's and Beta need to work out the issues that have been identified and to develop the information that engineering is asked for.
We would request, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mrs. Sullivan.
I would say we would request to be on the first, we'll get the information in and we'll get it back.
Okay, well, we need it, I mean, it would need to be done quickly enough so that Beta would have an opportunity to look at it. So sometime within, by the end of the week or the beginning of next week?
Yes.
Okay.
And what time should the hearing be continued to?
We have an open night that night, so I would say 7:20.
All right.
And Lee, I just wanted to remind everybody that Thanksgiving is next week in the holiday, so when we're thinking about when we need the information, we need to factor that in.
Well, people are probably not going to have their usual travel Thanksgiving, I just got a call from my daughter saying, Mom, you better not come to Rochester, New York, it's pretty bad here, so.
You know, now that Alex has mentioned that, I mean, it's tight for the first, it's very tight.
It is tight.
I mean, people, Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, for a lot of people are kind of off the table. So and the agenda package is going to be going out on the Thursday, so.
No, it's not, I'm not going to be working on Thanksgiving. It's going to be going out on either either late day Tuesday or probably more likely Wednesday, I think Wednesday will be the day.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm losing track of the dates. Be a look at it.
Unless I'm, unless I'm missing something in my head. No, no, yeah, Thanksgiving is that Thursday.
Right, so I mean, we're really talking about a package that's going out next Wednesday, so I don't know that that's really practical.
Well, I think that VHB's had the information from Beta, they've been working on it. You know, at the very least, we know we'll be able to come back on the first and make a presentation and respond to the points, and we would have fully expect we'd have a an opportunity to talk to Beta before that. And so we would, we would request to be on the first. If for some reason it couldn't happen, we could always continue that, but we're, we fully expect that we can do that.
Would our engineers from Beta comment on that timing as far as whether they think it's reasonable?
Go ahead, Jaclyn.
Sorry, Jeff, Madam Chair, yes, I was, would you be expecting a response, a formal response by us? Before then, we might not have enough time to review everything and formally respond, we could take a look at it?
I think we would expect a response. Because otherwise, we'd just have to put it off to, you know, a later hearing, you know, we'd want a written report from you that there had been that, well, first of all, of course, from VHB responding to your report. And then from you responding to VHB's response, wouldn't we want that, Lee Newman?
I would think we would want that, and I mean, that all has to happen in a week, so I don't know how practical that is.
Lee, if we make a motion to postpone to December 15th, what time would that be, also 20?
I think we have another hearing that we just noticed for that, for the 15th, Alex, didn't we, what time did we notice that for?
I will double check that, but I'm almost certain we would have done 7:20 because that's the only thing we have for that night.
Eight o'clock, we'll say.
Eight o'clock, and the other matter, is that one that will likely take a great deal of time and attention, or?
It will take a while, yes.
Actually, Lee, I also, am I muted? No. I also wanted to, I just remembered that we might have the 390 Grove Street that night. But we might not, so I don't know, I'm just telling you. That was, that was another thing out there.
Madam Chair and Beta, what if we got the information to Beta by end of day on Friday? I mean, that should give, I would think, plenty of time to have something put together by the first.
Do you think so, Jaclyn?
That's, you know, so then I would be required to review everything and respond by end of day Tuesday, that's it's, everything's getting packed in right before Thanksgiving, unfortunately, so, you know, I'm already behind on a few deadlines, but I mean, we haven't had any conversation with VHB yet about our comments, so, you know, if we had had that discussion, then I would have a better idea of what to expect. But unfortunately, we haven't at this point, which I anticipate happening very shortly, but it's still, you know, I don't have the information to.
Madam Chair, if I may, I move that we continue this hearing until December 15th at eight o'clock.
All right, before I get a second on that, I just want to ask Alexandra Cle again, if there is anybody with their hand up wanting to have something to say at this hearing right tonight. Is there anyone who has appeared?
Just scrolling. No.
All right, so we have a motion to continue this hearing to December 15th, and did you say the time was 8:00 PM?
8:00 PM, yes.
8:00 PM, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Owens is second the motion, and so I now will call the roll on whether we all agree on the continuation to December 15th.
Madam Chair.
Yes, or if any discussion, I should have said.
Yes, I just have a question. Attorney Sullivan seems intent on seeing if we can get this done by the first. And I'm just looking for thinking about alternatives. If Attorney Sullivan can get his response to Beta by the end of this week. And Beta can get us something, not by Tuesday, but by, say, November 30th, Monday. Or even if Beta would be prepared to tell us on December 1st that they do, in fact, they are in fact satisfied with all the responses by December 1st. A written report to follow. Would that, would that serve? I'm just asking the question.
Well, normally, just so you understand how peer review works, Beta, I meet with Beta, Tony and I meet with Beta, we go over their draft report to make sure we feel that they've addressed all the issues and there aren't some outstanding issues that need to be modified in their draft report. So it's really VHB submitting their response, it's Beta doing a draft response back to you. It's my reviewing it with the engineering department, it's our having a conversation with Beta, any adjustments that need to be made are made in the report. And then it's given to VHB in advance of the meeting, so they know what to expect.
So there's a couple of extra steps, okay.
What if, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Block?
What if we did make, you know, our best effort to continue for the first, and if we needed to, if there were some further deficiencies at that time, we do a subsequent continuance until the 15th?
Well, I see Attorney Sullivan nodding his head because he did say that, Mr. Albert?
Yes. We may be in a COVID environment, we may not all be traveling, but it's still a holiday weekend. And I appreciate the work that our our experts at Beta, experts might not be the word, but our contractors at Beta. And they're entitled to their rest on a holiday weekend, and I don't want to rush them. That's why I made the motion for the 15th. It's, let them relax over Thanksgiving weekend and focus in on this. You know, they come back on Monday and we give them one day. I don't think the two weeks is going to make that much of a difference in when this hospital gets built.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, let's, let's not rush this unnecessarily.
And I'd like to mention also that the sooner these reports get to us, the planning board, and we have the time to read and digest them, the more smoothly our hearing will go. So rushing it, it might not lead to a good result at our hearing. So I put that comment out. If there, is there further discussion on the motion for a continuance to the 15th?
I guess we just want to know from Attorney Sullivan, are we missing something? Is this two-week difference going to make a difference that we don't know about?
We are making our best efforts to get this done by the end of the year. You know, for our own reasons and with the sellers, so we really would like to do it. We fully understand and appreciate the sentiment expressed by the board. And that's why I was pushing. And if it can't happen, we understand that, but you know, we wanted to make it, wanted to make a try at it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, at this point, I will put that motion to a vote, roll call vote. Mr. Jacobs?
I will vote aye.
Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
And the board is aye, so we, this hearing is continued to December 15th at 8:00 PM.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So. Paper organized here. So what we have next on our agenda is Heather Lane definitive subdivision. And let me introduce those who are here to present for Heather Lane.
Also, Jean, I could give you just a brief overview of where we are on this, if you'd like.
Yes, I thought I would start with you, Lee, I appreciate your reminder on that. Is the property owner, William Pierceak, here?
He is.
You're muted, but I see.
Yes, yes, present, thank you.
Okay, and also is the property owner, Colby Kemble, here?
He will not be here tonight.
Okay, thank you. And the project engineer, Brandon Lee?
He is on standby if we need him.
All right. And Mr. Smart, Attorney Smart, Robert Smart is here, yes. So Lee Newman will update us on where we are with the Heather Lane subdivision.
Okay, so I think you all know that this case has been settled and that there's been a settlement agreement that's been filed and a copy has been provided by Town Council to us, and I think it was distributed to the board today. So the subdivision really is ripe now to go forward with the final paperwork that needs to happen in order to allow the subdivision to be constructed. So in both decisions that were issued, one for Heather Lane and one for Heather Lane Extension, there were a number of plan modifications that were required. The applicant has made those modifications to the plan, the technical changes that came out of the decisions. And those modifications have been reviewed by the engineering department and they have signed off on them. There are some other minor changes that have to happen to the plans before the mylas can be printed and signed by the board, which are just basically a listing of the documents that are going to go on record with the plan as well as a change in how the town clerk certifies the drawing, because there was an appeal that was issued on that. The documents themselves, the covenant, the restrictive covenants, the trust have been submitted by Mr. Smart. I reviewed them and I got back to him with my red lines. I think he's okay with mostly minor modifications that I made. They still need to go to Chris Heap for a review of the town council. And two of the documents need signatures by other boards, the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen. The restrictive covenants go to the board, to the select board, and the conservation restriction goes to both the Conservation Commission and the select board. So in order to really allow this thing to move forward quickly, I think the planning board could entertain a motion tonight to you know, to agree to endorse the plan when the modifications to the drawings are delivered. And when the documents themselves have been finalized and delivered in their executed form, approved by Town Council and signed by the respective boards that need to accept these easements.
That's a very complete explanation and leading to perhaps a motion that we endorse the plan on the conditions stated by our planning director. Is that a sufficient motion to carry out this approval?
Madam Chair, I believe that the motion, and I guess I'm about to make the motion. The motion is that we are voting to approve the plan to be executed by the planning board once the planning director has advised us that all of those conditions have been met.
I would just add one more condition, the drawings themselves are signed by the engineering department and the town clerk, but that would have to happen as well as what I just outlined.
That the drawings themselves are signed.
Are signed by DPW and by the town clerk before you sign them.
Okay, all right then.
I'll second the motion, I do have a question though. As part of the discussion. In your memo, Lee, to Bob Smart from November 10th, where you outline all these things that need to be done?
Yes.
You also ask, are there any mortgages on this property? Do we have an answer?
Yes.
Yes, Bob can answer that.
Yes, Colby Kemble's lot has a mortgage to Village Bank. So Lee and I have talked about this, we've communicated anyway. Four of the documents are going to require a mortgagee assent from Village Bank. I've been in touch with the VP over there. Lee, I think and I are in agreement on what the, essentially what the mortgagee assent clause should say. But I'm waiting to hear back from Village Bank about whether they're comfortable with the text of it. And I also have to, you know, make sure that the person who's going to be signing for Village Bank has authority to do so. So I'm waiting to hear back on that.
Is that the only mortgage, Bob?
Well, Bill Pierceak had mortgages, but he's told me that he wired funds to pay them off.
Yes, last Friday.
So they've been paid off, or you just, not yet?
No, they've been paid off, that's correct.
Okay.
And do you, Mr. Pierceak, do you have releases for recording?
They, so I wired the funds on Friday of last week and they said in, usually it's about 48 hours before I would get a discharge.
Okay.
But I have proof of wires and a letter from each bank indicating what the payoff figure is and then the corresponding wire information.
So the person who made the motion, that was you, Paul. So the person who made made the motion, that was you, Paul, was it not?
Yes.
Yes. Do you agree?
I'm going to add the condition of obtaining the the required mortgagee consents and discharges be be delivered or recorded.
And this is.
To our signing the plans.
And I wonder if you might add all to the satisfaction of municipal council.
Municipal, okay.
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion and I.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just one one possible addition to that motion. And that is the the decisions right now say that the the plans, and there are two, there are two sets of plans here, one for the residential compound, one for Heather Lane. They call for board endorsement within ninety days after the decision of the decisions. And that date turns out to be November twenty fifth. So we need more time. I don't think the the plans are going to be revised and the documents are going to be approved by the town council in time to meet that deadline of November twenty fifth. I mean, the reason we're.
There was an appeal that I don't think that deadline starts starts at the at the date you think it starts because there was.
If that's the if that's the if that's your interpretation, then I'm fine with it.
So we have nine ninety days from from the date of settlement of the.
Okay.
File filing with the settlement.
To be to be clear and careful about it, I mean, is it is there any harm to just extending that date?
No.
I would actually prefer that, perhaps for thirty days or sixty days.
It would seem to me as 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 a procedural matter that that should be a separate motion.
I was thinking the same thing.
Okay.
So why don't we go ahead with a was there a second to Mr. Albert's motion?
Yes, I seconded it, yes.
Okay, so the motion was seconded by Mr. Jacobs, so I'll call for a roll call vote now. Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
And the chair is aye. So the applicant had also asked for an extension of time to finalize all of the conditions that were in our motion for for endorsement of the plan. So and what what amount of time are we talking about?
Sixty days, I would say, just to be safe.
So sixty days.
I certainly don't want to wait that long, but you know, I'd hate to have to come back.
So sixty days from this date. Yep, all right.
Oh, Lee, what exactly are we extending? Is there a provision in the?
Well, the decision basically says that the petitioner shall present the plan for proper endorsement ninety days after the decision is executed, unless such time is extended in writing by the board. So I think the decision was executed on August eleventh.
Yes.
Correct. So is that a particular provision in the decision, a particular paragraph number to refer to?
Yes, with regard to Heather Lane, I believe it's 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 section forty two. I don't have right in front of me right now, which it's, you know, it's the analogous provision in the Heather Lane Extension Decision. I don't I don't have the number in front of me right now.
Okay.
Certainly get it.
Well, Heather Lane extend they're both they're both paragraph, they're both paragraph forty two, as it turns out.
Okay.
So I move that provisions that provision forty two of the Heather Lane decision and provision forty two of the, I'm sorry, Bob, what's it called again, the second?
Heather Lane, Heather Lane Extension.
The Heather Lane Extension Decision be amended to provide that the plans are to be provided by by January fifteen twenty twenty one.
Second.
All right, and by provided, you mean endorsed? By us, that's the deadline.
They need, is that what it is, Lee, that the plans are to be endorsed by us or the plans are to be provided by the petitioner?
Endorsed by us, so I guess.
I'm sorry, I missed that the plans that that those paragraphs be amended to provide to extend the date by which the plans need to be endorsed by us to January fifteen twenty twenty one.
And that I will second.
So we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion of that motion? Hearing none, I call for a vote, roll call, Mr. Jacobs.
You're breaking up, Jean.
Try again, Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
And Mr. Owens.
Aye.
The chair is aye, I have that vote.
So Jean, you now need to disconnect and come back.
Yes, I will, all right, thank you. And I we have nothing but. Oh, yes, I will.
Paul, you're authorized to move us forward in the interim.
I guess.
Our appeals client cases, I think, are next.
This looks like a coup in the making.
I was going to move we adjourn.
I was about to say that I think we should discuss whether the election naming naming Jean as the chair was was a rigged election. Whether we should whether we should demand a recount.
Fake news, Paul.
Uh oh, Jean's back.
I'm back.
Jean, you got back just in time. We were about to depose you.
Depose. Well, Steve did some magic too on our connection, so I think I'll be all right now. You can hear me all right. All right, so so we've dealt with the Heather Lane. And so we have five Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we're all set, Mr. Smart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have the five petitions for the zoning Board of Appeals were sent to us for review if we wish to comment on them. Does anyone, I don't know if we want to go down one, two, three, four, five, or have somebody say no comment at all or whatever. What are your thoughts? Does anyone, let me put it this way, does anyone have want to make a comment on any of the five?
A believing question.
Do you want I mean, do you want me to go down them so as to remind us all? Oh, you know what? I did not print them out. I just looked at them online. Perhaps, Lee, could you just say what each one is about?
Yes, let me just get to it. Give me a minute.
I could just tell you on case one, it's nine twenty six Greendale Avenue, a A D U application.
For a disabled vet.
For disabled vet.
Yes. Is there any comment on on that application for the accessory dwelling unit?
One note, one note is that the size is not to exceed eight fifty and the application is for eight seventy two square feet.
Oh, good point. I think we should we should note that. So not to exceed eight sixty, I remember that.
Eight fifty, Madam Chair.
Oh, it's eight fifty?
Yes.
Our building inspector certainly knows the requirement, but it's certainly worth a comment, yeah.
Yeah, but yes, they, right, it would be awkward for the zoning Board of Appeals to approve it and then have it have to go back and forth a bit on that. So if we comment, they're probably perceived that as helpful. Do we need to vote, vote on sending that comment?
Yes.
All right, so do I have a motion to make that comment with regard to that address of?
Nine twenty six Greendale.
Nine twenty six.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. And any further discussion on that? Then I'll call for a vote, Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so that was, of course, to ask our planning director to communicate that comment in writing. So what is the next?
Number two is twenty seven Warren Street, the addition of a first floor bathroom in the back.
Any comment?
I move no comment on that.
Okay. It's Mr. Jacobs' move, Mr. Albert's seconded that we make no comment for the addition to twenty seven Warren Street. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote, Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
All right, and so what is the next one? Oh, and the chair is aye.
Okay, the third one is eleven Gatewood Drive. Looking for either a variance or a special permit.
I think variance is what they need.
I'm sorry?
I think they need a variance. I think it's an undersized lot. I think it was part of a subdivision and there was a problem or an issue and the lot was not properly sized.
Yeah, the problem seems to have been created if there if the applicant is to be believed in that the plan was originally approved, but it turns out the plan was wrong and the lot is smaller than it was originally shown on the approved plan.
Yeah, I know it seemed to have been a surveyor's error.
Apparently.
So I don't know that it's our role to give legal advice to the zoning Board of Appeals on which form of relief they have the authority to grant. I'm inclined to focus more on the relief sought if we had a problem with granting that relief or a comment about it.
I don't know what the with the law is on availability of a variance in the event of a plan error. I'm not aware of any case law on that, though you.
But isn't that an issue for the zoning for the Board of Appeals?
Yeah.
Shouldn't we just make a no comment?
Well, they have they certainly have lawyers on the Board of Appeals.
And if it needs to be referred to counsel, it can be referred to counsel. Because it is a strange situation. As you point out, Marty, it doesn't seem that it's really a prior nonconforming. In other words, that the small lot existed, in fact, on the ground prior to the establishment of zoning. That's the standard, right? So it's hard to see how it can be a prior nonconforming undersized lot. At the same time, I hesitate to give that kind of legal advice.
I'm, yeah, I'm I'm going to admit that I wasn't able to actually focus in on this. Has anybody actually looked at the plan to see whether there's another way around it by an exchange of? I mean, is 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 there something when they can where they could get together with the neighbor and have have some land exchanged in order to increase this lot size to make it conforming?
I hate to be a pain, but is that our problem to solve? I move no comment.
You're not being a painted. I think I think you may be right.
No, I think he is right. I know second his motion.
All right, so we have a motion for no comment and a second, and any further discussion? Hearing none, I move for a vote, Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
The chair is aye, so there's no comment on eleven Gatewood Drive.
Case four, case four is one Wellesley Avenue. Seeking permit to permit the demolition, extension, alteration, enlargement and reconstruction of a lawful preexisting nonconforming two family dwelling and multiple accessory buildings to a new two family dwelling with an accessory garage garage. And there appears to be great neighbor support.
Yes.
I move no comment.
And we have a motion for no comment and was there a second? And I might, it was noted in the communications about this that this was the subject of denial by, I'm not sure if it was our board. I seem to recall it was before our board in some way. It's been pending and a problem for a long time. And now they've come to a resolution that it appears the neighbors is satisfied with. So by way of discussion, I was introducing that we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Now, hearing none, I call for a vote, Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Okay, so we have one more, and I believe that's in the A zone. It's a large lot.
Vote, Jean.
Oh, it's what? Oh, did I not bring it to a vote in the in the chair of his eyes?
Yeah, okay.
I'll settle with that, okay. Again, one step there, so, all right, so our vote was to make no comment and there's one left.
In case five is one eighty two and one ninety Edgewater Drive. They want to combine the two lots. Tear down one of the houses and put up a pool and other things. Nice out there.
Is anybody want to comment on that or do you want to make a motion?
I'll move no comment.
Mr. Jacobs moves no comment. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Black seconds it. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question for Lee as as to why a combination of existing lots is a question for the zoning board instead of for us?
Why would it be a question for us?
You know, if we have to deal with subdivisions, planning board has no juris, the zoning Board of Appeals has no jurisdiction over subdivisions. Why isn't the combining of lots kind of like an approval?
I'm not sure what's happening with the combination of lots. If the lots are owned on both sides by the same person.
We can't bind them unless they're owned by the same person.
Well, they're combining them, right, so they could do that through an eighty one X plan, which would which not which would not even require your involvement.
There was material, there was material submitted that seemed to say that the that one of the lots was the subject of a purchase and sale agreement. Did you notice that in the materials?
Yes.
So perhaps it's not yet owned by the by by the same owner. So, yeah, I agree with you, though. It does seem if it's if it's an approval not required plan, it would come before us. If it's something you can just do and bring to the registry, why, why?
But, you know, they've made their application and the and the Z B A will decide what whether they even want to do it. I was I was just curious. I was just asking the question. I wasn't looking to make a comment to the Z B A.
Yep, okay, so that was a discussion on the, let me remind me, we have a motion and a second, do we not?
We do.
Okay, so is there any further discussion? Then I call for a vote, Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so we have no comment. So with the exception of the first, the matter, the A D U at nine twenty six Greendale, we have no no comment. The only one we're making a comment on is the first one. Okay, I think that brings us to the minutes. I looked over the revised minutes. And they're fine, except there's just a couple of little typo type of things on. So on the minute state. so on the minute stated September twenty-second, twenty-twenty, on the third page. Um, yeah, um, this, this had to do with, um, uh, presentation on, um, at the most recent town meeting, the special town meeting. And the question was raised on whether in the presentation we should talk about developer involvement at the beginning, you know, as part of our presentation. Then there's a sentence in the minutes that says, that said originally, "He would deal with it within the presentation." It being the developer and the role of, um, uh, anything about the developer. And in my comments, I had put, uh, in brackets, "Not?" question mark, because I really thought what, um, what was being said by, um, by Mr. Jacobs was, he would not, I mean, in other words, he recommends that we not deal with it within the presentation. Doesn't that make more sense to you, um, Marty? Am, am, am I explaining that correctly?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to remember what the conversation was, actually.
Yeah, I can read more words. The paragraph begins, "Mr. Jacobs will look at the next draft of the presentation and give comments. He would de-emphasize spot zoning. He feels he, in other words, um, Adam Block, should not talk about the developer involvement aspect at the beginning, or maybe not at all. The same issue happened at the transit-oriented site," and I think you're referring to the Hartney-Grahamont site.
Right.
The next sentence is, as it was originally worded, "He would deal with it within the presentation." Did you say?
You, you're right.
Deal with it, or he would not deal?
He would not, he would not. I think you're right. That's the right context, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, um, do I have a motion for the acceptance of the September twenty-second, twenty-twenty minutes with the change, uh, and the insertion of the word "not" in the sentence on page three, "He would not deal with it."
I, I still move.
I have a motion, Mr. Jacobs, the second, second from Mr. Block, uh, any, well, there's no discussion, I'm sure. Um, call for a vote. Uh, Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Albert.
Hi.
And the chair is I, so those minutes are accepted. Um, the, uh, as brief as they are, the minutes of the October fourth meeting, there were, there were actually kind of three typos here, um, in the fourth paragraph, and this was the meeting that we had just prior on the same day as the special town meeting. Um, it's a paragraph that, uh, it regards the Article seventeen resolution. That was the, uh, Citizens Petition Resolution, um, that, um, you know, urged the town to take certain actions, um, and the select board had, uh, recommended that it be referred, the, the matter of that article be referred back to the selectmen, and ultimately, town meeting instead adopted the resolution. But in our discussion, it's just that, in the, in the third line of the paragraph, we're, of our discussion about this, it says, "The select board's request," and select boards, B O U R D, apostrophe, yes, it needs an apostrophe, that's all. Um, so there we go with that. In the same paragraph, though, and this, I think, is perhaps more substantive, uh, Mr. Owens was speaking, and he says, "He feels the hidden agenda is they really want to fund the police."
It was defund.
Defund, yes, and I failed to notice that when I was doing the edits originally. So that would be the second change. And apostrophe S on boards, "Defund on the police" in that paragraph. And then in the next paragraph, we're also talking about Article seventeen, and it's Mr. Jacobs talking, um, and, and he said, it is, oh, if it is referenced back, he wants to be able to study it.
Refer back.
It is referred.
Right, right, right.
Those would be the three changes, boards with apostrophe S, "Defund" and "Referred." Uh, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the October fourth, twenty-twenty, um, meeting with those three changes?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion from Mr. Jacobs, a second from Mr. Block. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, um, Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Albert.
Hi.
And the chair is I, so the October fourth minutes are accepted with those three changes. Uh, so, um, I didn't see any correspondence. Is there anything or any, uh, I think you want to tell us, Lee, on your report from Planning Director?
Well, there was correspondence. I, we included the memo from Dan Matthews on the, um, and the, on, on the forty-B, um, process, and that we had, basically, he was going to be giving, giving us more time to respond.
Mm-hmm, and let me say, um, that was, um, was Marty Jacobs who, uh, made it a draft so that we, he and I were authorized at our last planning board meeting to work together to come up with, um, a response. Um, and I had my draft, uh, Marty had his draft, Karen Sonnen, Sonner Borg, um, uh, had some comments in a memo, and, uh, Lee incorporated all those into a single document. And as part of that, um, document, almost everything is just something that, uh, can all be one document, and nothing very, nothing really controversial in our, except that there were a couple of, um, Marty Jacobs, um, said, "There are two things that need further discussion. One is the preferred areas. Are we still preferring to have, um, any forty-B development in the same areas that were identified in, in, by, by reference to a map in, uh, two thousand twelve?" And the other question was on the preferred density. Um, Marty thought that was something that needs discussion. I called Lee today, um, uh, or Lee called me, I guess, uh, we were talking about, uh, the agenda for tonight's meeting, um, and, um, and, and said, "Really, it's not something that we need to put our heads together as a planning board about right now. All that's needed is a transmittal cover letter for this, uh, revised document that states these are things that need further discussion, and suggests that there be a meeting of the, uh, concerned boards." Do I have that correct?
That was my intent, yes.
Yeah, so that's what we'll do, uh, next. Oh, um, it's on, um, uh, the, the, the document now just needs a little cleaning up, that's all. And then I think it's on, uh, my to-do list to draft that cover letter, okay? All right. Anything else, Lee, or any, well, firstly, and then any board members?
Yeah, so you know, we have a meeting tomorrow morning at eight o'clock on Highway Commercial One, which is the presentation by G P I of the traffic study. So I don't know if, if anybody, if you've read through the traffic study yet, but the presentation is tomorrow, I guess, just from my own edification. Who's going to be attending? Are, are you all planning to come, or?
I will be there for the first half.
Okay, okay, great. Um, so that's, that's on for tomorrow. Um, and Ted, just a follow-up, I think I mentioned to you that there was a, you know, an interest in doing a student project around Chestnut Street. I got, I got today a draft, uh, from Amy on a proposed scope of work. I haven't really reviewed it myself. I just had too much else going on. I'm going to forward it over to you, because I want your comments on it, too, before I respond.
Great.
I'll send that over to you tonight or tomorrow morning, so you can take a look.
Thank you.
And then lastly, Paul, the reason on Edgewater Drive, um, it was a special permit because for, for work on the floodplain. That's why it wasn't in front of us. Z B A is the entity that gives the special permits for that kind of work, not us.
Thank you for the explanation.
Okay. Oh. All right, if there is no other business, I'll see, um, I guess, all, all of the members, um, tomorrow morning. And I haven't read the traffic report yet, I must admit, so.
I, I, I figured they were going to make a presentation.
They are, and it's a, it's a very, you know, I've seen the PowerPoint. I've sat through it twice already, so I think, I think, I think it'll be very informative.
All right, so I don't need to stay up until eleven-thirty reading, reading the report.
I think the report will, will take you through all the major conclusions and what the, you know, foundational assumptions were, so.
All right.
I think it'd be a good meeting.
All right, so at this point, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we welcome Alex back to the meeting.
Yes, of course. Hi, Alex. Um, all right.
I move to adjourn.
All right, Adam Block makes a motion, uh, to adjourn. Uh, who is seconding that motion?
I'll second it.
And, uh, was that Marty?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion and a second, and, um, all in favor of adjourning. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Albert.
Hi.
The chair is I, and we stand adjourned. Good night.
Night.
Good morning.
All right.